Coffee Talk, we're still doing a little bit of setup. But as a reminder that meetings of the Select Board and Coffee Talk here are generally recorded or are being recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Access channel, the YouTube channel, so your voice, your image, and your telephone number may be recorded, especially for people in the room, since we're live right now. If you say things loud enough, I am sure that camera, that microphone will pick you up and people in town might hear you.
Nice car.
You can still chat among yourselves because we probably have another minute before we really get into this, but we at least do a disclaimer right before the point.
You don't think that people can't hear me? Seriously?
Oh, him. Him, him.
Him, him?
Him, you.
I didn't know if we need the...
Here you go.
Well, I'm trying to figure out how, just one screen is so limiting. I had spoiled at home and work and...
Where's the other giant TV that we could've plugged in?
I know, we had one right there. We didn't like set it up right. But we have actually a good participation, both online and in the room, so very happy to hear it. And so as people settle in, and I see a couple of people still even joining online, we will... Ooh, a whole bunch of people are coming in even now. Welcome, folks, to Coffee Talk. It is our first attempt to try to do this as a hybrid environment, and so we are going to do our best to both pay attention to the chats online. I think people probably just raised their hand or somehow to get recognized as we get to those points. We have a bunch of stuff on the agenda tonight because of all kinds of really interesting things and fun things happening in town. And I don't know if, Paul, you want to kick us off talking about the new mattress recycling program at the transfer station? And I don't know if you want to refind a spot?
Whether I want to or not is not a question. Hi, good evening. Paul McKelk with the Board of Health. The DEP earlier this year passed the mandate to start, mandates recycling of mattresses and box springs. And that will go into effect November 1st. And the way the DEP usually works is they will mandate something and then leave it to free enterprise to figure out how it's all going to work, which is the case in this situation. They, as helpful as they can be, but they're not the end processors or anything like that. So currently...
I'm sorry, I didn't record. Maybe cable's recording.
Cable's recording, but you can record now.
Go, yeah, go ahead.
All right, so currently, this is what we know. The mattress recycling mandate begins November 1st. The town was able to get a grant to buy a special container for storing and transporting the mattresses, which is part of the requirement from DEP because they can't be commingled with anything else. The grant was for about $10,000, and I thank Sue and Donna from our staff for crunching the numbers and getting the grant. It's going to be touch and go whether we have the container for November 1st, just because of the way things are in the whole manufacturing industry. I'm told it'll be close. We should have it, but we'll adjust as we have to. Disposal costs are unknown at this point. Right now, I'm told that we will have the option of three different disposal sites, one in Gardner, one in Lemonster, excuse me, and one in Worcester. The DEP has the preferred list, but it's not mandated that we use any of them. So we're obviously going to shop that for the transportation cost to get to one of these places and also what they charge for the disposal or delivery of each mattress and box spring. Currently, that number is around $50 per item. I would encourage anybody that's buying new to try and get the store they're buying from to take away the old one. That may be possible in some cases, others not so much. Because of the bulk of them, of each item, right now, we're not, we're not firm in how we're going to handle them at the transfer station. Our current thinking is that we're just going to allow them on Saturdays when we have extra help because they're kind of unwieldy for any one person to deal with. Sometimes two people is a challenge. So we want to make sure that our resident who brings it can help, but that we also have adequate help on site to properly store these in the container. And obviously, it's a little bit of geometry. We want to stack them properly so we get as many in a container as possible. Other than that, there's not much to say about it. There's still a lot of things in fluctuation. The facility in Lemonster is still in the process of opening. I have conversations with them, but it's, you know, well, we're waiting on this, waiting on that, like everything else in the supply chain. So there are still some unanswered questions. It should all shake out over the next six weeks. The first month might be a little challenging. Currently, mattresses go in our general bulk disposal, but there's a $50 charge for us. So in some ways, we're looking forward to being able to isolate the mattresses and box springs to their own container, and we can quantify things much better and charge accordingly. Other than that, I'll try and answer any questions.
Thanks.
Do you know where you're going to put the, shocking, I have a question. Do you know where you're going to put the container?
No, we have conversations going about that. I mean, convers...
I'm assuming somewhere up top.
They can dig up, they can dig up hot top, so we have to be careful about that. We've ordered a container with larger wheels to help mitigate that. We may have to put down a couple pieces of steel plate. It's going to be in the upper operational level of the transfer station for sure. But other than that, we're still juggling with some logistics.
Okay.
Are there quick questions, either online or in the audience here?
Tell them to raise their hands if they...
Yeah, in your audience, you can raise your hands if you have a question. We can get there. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Yep.
I think next we'll bring up the police chief to talk about things that are going on in the police department. There's a couple of exciting opportunities happening there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so this past, I believe, April, the Stevens Family Foundation wants to donate a drone unit to the town of Berlin. The total donation will be around $100,000, which includes the vehicle as well as four drones. And that's two drones of each size. It's not four separate drones. He wants us to have a backup. So I've reached out to Franklin Police Department, who has a very active drone unit, as well as Auburn, mimic their policy and procedures, and also priced out a vehicle for the drone unit itself, which will also be a patrol vehicle as well. And I know there was probably some concern thinking that we would be up just flying whenever we want, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, it's just like our body worn cameras. Everything gets logged, and it's the same public records retention, so whatever we do with the drone stays on the log and also public records is accessible to the public as well, what we do with it. The difference between us flying and the public is we need to call in for an FAA flight number every time, so we just can't randomly throw up a drone. We have to be licensed, which the Stevens Family Foundation has offered to pay for, for our training and our license fees, which is probably around another $5,000. So we have an opportunity to bring great technology to the police department, and of course, you know, the younger officers are more excited about it than I am. I think it's a great tool. I've seen them work, and basically, you're adding like six more officers to your fleet when you have one drone, you know, because you have eyes in the sky.
Yeah, could you give sort of examples of use cases where this would be helpful, where it'd be...
Well, the cases that we've used the drone, one was a murder suspect that was found in the woods, you know, versus humans entering. The person was armed. Anytime we have a missing child, you know, we have the ABC Center in town. We had, two weeks ago or three weeks ago, we had a senior citizen that walked away at 3:00 in the morning. Fortunately, a resident saw them. You know, if they didn't see him, the drones have infrared cameras and can search a lot more area than we can with using flashlights. You know, so, you know, you use it for conservation, to check out a conservation land, DPW for road mapping, you know, pretty much any board in town, you know, we can facilitate.
Great. Do we have sort of potential, I know you have some other things to talk about as well, but do you have potentially questions on drones? Barry, go ahead.
I'm just curious, is it a done deal as far as the purchase of them? Or does it need town approval?
No, we need board approval.
Okay.
Board approval for the donation. The money will come to our coffers, and then we can order the equipment.
And is it scheduled? Just curious.
It's not currently on the agenda, but I think we're just waiting for it to be sort of, a lot of people are there, were working on sort of the policy procedures and others have to ensure that that's in place before we just accept the donation and don't know what we're going to do with them yet. So I don't think it's super long out there, but I don't think we're not talking in the next week or two at least. Probably later this year. I want to get those last pieces put together.
Lisa had a question.
Sorry. Yes, Lisa?
I just had a question. From having courses, I know that the cheat card is getting the free course. Is what part of this process, the long-term maintenance of the training and the taking care of the equipment and all of these other things?
So the training is once and you're done, and Stevens Family Foundation has offered to pay for any maintenance, which the next maintenance would probably be two years out for new batteries, that they've offered to purchase those batteries in two years.
Thank you.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Who is the Stevens Family Foundation?
That's the family that bought the old Spooky World property that's building a museum down there.
He's out of Marlborough, Brian Stevens, huge philanthropist.
Yeah, mostly been in Marlborough his life. Tried to build this, the short version, he tried to build this museum at the airport in Marlborough, and Marlborough wasn't overly excited about losing some buildings to museum when they have a belief that airport's going to be something at some point. And so he's looked at Berlin as a place to go and has put a chunk of money into Spooky World property at this point, too.
What do you anticipate for information to the town if residents have concern? They're not going to know, Eric, that there's a little kid missing and that's why the drone is up or something. So what is the information? Would you be able to use like a reverse 911 to say if you see a drone up, there's a reason why?
So we can use reverse 911 as long as I'm in the station, and I can do it. Chances are, if there's somebody missing, I'm not going to be here. So our main focus will probably be through Facebook or Twitter.
Okay.
Yep, I've been trying to watch for that, too. So people at home can raise hands if they have questions as well. Do you want to go on to speed sign updates?
So speed signs, we've had them for, since what, June, the beginning of June now. They've been collecting a lot of data, and they were anticipated on being able to move them across town, but the three locations that they've been in have been an absolute need. The issue we have is we're replacing the batteries sometimes every seven days, sometimes 10 days, sometimes four days, depending on weather conditions, temperatures. So I contacted the company to see what we need to switch those over to solar signs, solar powered signs, and I just got the quote back. It's about $1,100 per sign. We have four currently to switch over, or we can spend $13,000 and buy four more.
And what are we learning from these signs besides their...
People speed through town.
So believe it or not, we're learning that about 99.87% of the people are not speeding. So, you know, obviously, our visual traffic is heightened thinking they're speeding, but the data is showing that, especially in Carnival, I believe it was 99.87% were under the threshold for a speeding ticket.
Questions about some of those speed signs?
What about traffic, Eric? Because we know that there's tons of, there were always tons of concerns of Pleasant going left, South Street going left.
Yeah, so anytime there's an incident on 495 and 290, we are inundated with cars. And I believe one morning, two tractor trailers rolled over, and Mass DOT, I think estimated 80,000 cars came through Berlin. You know, one day, I was dropping my son off at school, hit traffic on 117. I said, "Well, I know the back way to get to work," so I started kicking the back way.
Everybody else did, too.
And then there was 25 cars in front of me, and everybody has ways. So we're definitely seeing a huge increase in traffic through ways. If 117's backed up, we're probably getting extra 300, 300 or 400 cars, which, you know, and the numbers don't sound great, but if you live in the neighborhood, that's a lot.
So with the numbers that you're getting, and we all know that, you know, you can't just plop a stoplight at the end of Pleasant, and you can't plop one in the end of South. With the data that you're collecting, does that almost like help Berlin to say that we, you know, hello DOT, we really need to do something because we're getting X amount of cars through town?
The conversation I had with Mass DOT is that the last time they came out to do their studies, a little over a year ago, we still don't meet the threshold for the number of cars. I can't see that happening anytime soon. They told me they'd be out in March doing another traffic count. I've yet to see them show up.
The hack for ways?
Yes.
Not that I'd say it in a public meeting that's being recorded, but, you know, mark your road as closed and have your neighbors then approve that, saying, yes, it's still closed, so that Waze thinks the road is closed and routes people other directions. I also read at one point, you could took, if you took like 100 cell phones that had data plans and turned ways on all of them and put them in a wagon and dragged them up the street at two miles an hour, that Waze would report that it's two miles an hour is the traffic on that road and route people otherwise. Other fun updates going on?
Just the radio system, we're, just went up to rebid on the antenna system, and hopefully in the next week or two, we can wrap that up. The first set of bids came in quite far apart, so we're hoping the next set comes in pretty close together.
Could you give a little explanation? Because I know someone's going to raise his hand in the audience to say what's, you know, what's the, what's going on with the radios and why the need for bids?
So, well, we need bids because of the price of the antenna systems are above the threshold. Our biggest issue is we can't hear dispatch. A lot of times, dispatch can't hear us. We're using our phones, our apps to see locations of where we're actually going and also what the call is, which, you know, for me, it's a little bit more difficult being a Gen Xer, the millennials and...
Coffee Talk, we're still doing a little bit of setup, but as a reminder that meetings of the Select Board and Coffee Talk here are generally recorded or are being recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Access channel, the YouTube channel, so your voice, your image, and your telephone number may be recorded, especially for people in the room, since we're live right now. If you say things loud enough, I am sure that camera, that microphone will pick you up and people in town might hear you.
Nice car.
You can still chat among yourselves because we probably have another minute before we really get into this, but we at least do a disclaimer right before the point.
You don't think that people can't hear me? Seriously?
Oh, him. Him, him.
Him, him?
Him, you.
I didn't know if we need the...
Here you go.
Well, I'm trying to figure out how, just one screen is so limiting. I had spoiled at home and work and...
Where's the other giant TV that we could've plugged in?
I know, we had one right there. We didn't like set it up right. But we have actually a good participation, both online and in the room, so very happy to hear it. And so as people settle in, and I see a couple of people still even joining online, we will, ooh, a whole bunch of people are coming in even now. Welcome, folks, to Coffee Talk. It is our first attempt to try to do this as a hybrid environment, and so we are going to do our best to both pay attention to the chats online. I think people probably just raised their hand or somehow to get recognized as we get to those points. We have a bunch of stuff on the agenda tonight because of all kinds of really interesting things and fun things happening in town. And I don't know if, Paul, you want to kick us off talking about the new mattress recycling program at the transfer station? And I don't know if you want to refind a spot?
Whether I want to or not is not a question. Hi, good evening. Paul McKelk with the Board of Health. The DEP earlier this year passed the mandate to start, mandates recycling of mattresses and box springs. And that will go into effect November 1st. And the way the DEP usually works is they will mandate something and then leave it to free enterprise to figure out how it's all going to work, which is the case in this situation. They, as helpful as they can be, but they're not the end processors or anything like that. So currently...
I'm sorry, I didn't record. Maybe cable's recording.
Cable's recording, but you can record now.
Go, yeah, go ahead.
All right, so currently, this is what we know. The mattress recycling mandate begins November 1st. The town was able to get a grant to buy a special container for storing and transporting the mattresses, which is part of the requirement from DEP because they can't be commingled with anything else. The grant was for about $10,000, and I thank Sue and Donna from our staff for crunching the numbers and getting the grant. It's going to be touch and go whether we have the container for November 1st, just because of the way things are in the whole manufacturing industry. I'm told it'll be close. We should have it, but we'll adjust as we have to. Disposal costs are unknown at this point. Right now, I'm told that we will have the option of three different disposal sites, one in Gardner, one in Lemonster, excuse me, and one in Worcester. The DEP has the preferred list, but it's not mandated that we use any of them. So we're obviously going to shop that for the transportation cost to get to one of these places and also what they charge for the disposal or delivery of each mattress and box spring. Currently, that number is around $50 per item. I would encourage anybody that's buying new to try and get the store they're buying from to take away the old one. That may be possible in some cases, others not so much. Because of the bulk of them, of each item, right now, we're not, we're not firm in how we're going to handle them at the transfer station. Our current thinking is that we're just going to allow them on Saturdays when we have extra help because they're kind of unwieldy for any one person to deal with. Sometimes two people is a challenge. So we want to make sure that our resident who brings it can help, but that we also have adequate help on site to properly store these in the container. And obviously, it's a little bit of geometry. We want to stack them properly so we get as many in a container as possible. Other than that, there's not much to say about it. There's still a lot of things in fluctuation. The facility in Lemonster is still in the process of opening. I have conversations with them, but it's, you know, well, we're waiting on this, waiting on that, like everything else in the supply chain. So there are still some unanswered questions. It should all shake out over the next six weeks. The first month might be a little challenging. Currently, mattresses go in our general bulk disposal, but there's a $50 charge for us. So in some ways, we're looking forward to being able to isolate the mattresses and box springs to their own container, and we can quantify things much better and charge accordingly. Other than that, I'll try and answer any questions.
Thanks. Paul?
Do you know where you're going to put the, shocking, I have a question. Do you know where you're going to put the container?
No, we have conversations going about that. I mean, convers...
I'm assuming somewhere up top.
They can dig up, they can dig up hot top, so we have to be careful about that. We've ordered a container with larger wheels to help mitigate that. We may have to put down a couple pieces of steel plate. It's going to be in the upper operational level of the transfer station for sure. But other than that, we're still juggling with some logistics.
Okay.
Are there quick questions, either online or in the audience here?
Tell them to raise their hands if they...
Yeah, in your audience, you can raise your hands if you have a question. We can get there. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Yep.
I think next we'll bring up the police chief to talk about things that are going on in the police department. There's a couple of exciting opportunities happening there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so this past, I believe, April, the Stevens Family Foundation wants to donate a drone unit to the town of Berlin. The total donation will be around $100,000, which includes the vehicle as well as four drones. And that's two drones of each size. It's not four separate drones. He wants us to have a backup. So I've reached out to Franklin Police Department, who has a very active drone unit, as well as Auburn, mimic their policy and procedures, and also priced out a vehicle for the drone unit itself, which will also be a patrol vehicle as well. And I know there was probably some concern thinking that we would be up just flying whenever we want, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, it's just like our body worn cameras. Everything gets logged, and it's the same public records retention, so whatever we do with the drone stays on the log and also public records is accessible to the public as well, what we do with it. The difference between us flying and the public is we need to call in for an FAA flight number every time, so we just can't randomly throw up a drone. We have to be licensed, which the Stevens Family Foundation has offered to pay for, for our training and our license fees, which is probably around another $5,000. So we have an opportunity to bring great technology to the police department, and of course, you know, the younger officers are more excited about it than I am. I think it's a great tool. I've seen them work, and basically, you're adding like six more officers to your fleet when you have one drone, you know, because you have eyes in the sky.
Yeah, could you give sort of examples of use cases where this would be helpful, where it'd be...
Well, the cases that we've used the drone, one was a murder suspect that was found in the woods, you know, versus humans entering. The person was armed. Anytime we have a missing child, you know, we have the ABC Center in town. We had, two weeks ago or three weeks ago, we had a senior citizen that walked away at 3:00 in the morning. Fortunately, a resident saw them. You know, if they didn't see him, the drones have infrared cameras and can search a lot more area than we can with using flashlights. You know, so, you know, you use it for conservation, to check out a conservation land, DPW for road mapping, you know, pretty much any board in town, you know, we can facilitate.
Great. Do we have sort of potential, I know you have some other things to talk about as well, but do you have potentially questions on drones? Barry, go ahead.
I'm just curious, is it a done deal as far as the purchase of them? Or does it need town approval?
No, we need board approval.
Okay.
Board approval for the donation. The money will come to our coffers, and then we can order the equipment.
And is it scheduled? Just curious.
It's not currently on the agenda, but I think we're just waiting for it to be sort of, a lot of people are there, were working on sort of the policy procedures and others have to ensure that that's in place before we just accept the donation and don't know what we're going to do with them yet. So I don't think it's super long out there, but I don't think we're not talking in the next week or two. next week or two, at least. Probably later this year, I want to get those last pieces put together.
Lisa had a question.
Sorry, yes, Lisa?
I just had a question. From having horses, I know that the cheat card is getting the free horse. Is what part of this process, the long-term maintenance of the training and the taking care of the equipment and all of these other things?
So the training is once and you're done, and Stevens Family Foundation has offered to pay for any maintenance, which the next maintenance would probably be two years out for new batteries, that they've offered to purchase those batteries in two years.
Thank you.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Who is the Stevens Family Foundation?
That's the family that bought the old Spooky World property that's built in a museum down there.
He's out of Marlboro, Brian Stevens, huge philanthropist.
Yeah, mostly been in Marlboro his life, tried to build this, the short version, he tried to build this museum at the airport in Marlboro, and Marlboro wasn't overly excited about losing some buildings to museum when they have a belief that airport's going to be something at some point. And so he's looked at Berlin as a place to go, and has put a chunk of money into Spooky World property at this point, too.
What do you anticipate for information to the town if residents have concern? They're not going to know, Eric, that there's a little kid missing and that's why the drone is up, or something. So what is the information, would you be able to use like a reverse 911 to say if you see a drone up, there's a reason why?
So we can use reverse 911 as long as I'm in the station, and I can do it. Chances are, if there's somebody missing, I'm not going to be here. So our main focus will probably be through Facebook or Twitter.
Okay.
Yep, I've been trying to watch for that, too. So people at home can raise hands if they have questions as well. Do you want to go on to speed sign updates?
So speed signs, we've had them for, since what, June, the beginning of June now? They've been collecting a lot of data, and they were anticipated on being able to move them across town, but the three locations that they've been in have been an absolute need. The issue we have is we're replacing the batteries sometimes every seven days, sometimes 10 days, sometimes four days, depending on weather conditions, temperatures. So I contacted the company to see what we need to switch those over to solar signs, solar powered signs, and I just got the quote back, it's about $1,100 per sign. We have four currently to switch over, or we can spend $13,000 and buy four more.
And what are we learning from these signs besides their?
People speed through town.
So, believe it or not, we're learning that about 99.87% of the people are not speeding. So, you know, obviously, our visual traffic is definitely heightened, thinking they're speeding, but the data is showing that, especially in Carnival, I believe it was 99.87% were under the threshold for speeding ticket.
Questions about some of those speed signs?
What about traffic, Eric? Because we know that there's tons of, there were always tons of concerns of Pleasant going left, South Street going left.
Yeah, so anytime there's an incident on 495 and 290, we are inundated with cars, and I believe one morning, two tractor trailers rolled over, and Mass DOT, I think, estimated 80,000 cars came through Berlin. You know, one day, I was dropping my son off at school, hit traffic on 117. I said, "Well, I know the back way to get to work," so I started kicking the back way.
Everybody else did, too.
And then there was 25 cars in front of me, and everybody has ways. So we're definitely seeing a huge increase in traffic through ways. If 117's backed up, we're probably getting extra 300, 300 or 400 cars, which, you know, and the numbers don't sound great, but if you live in the neighborhood, that's a lot.
So with the numbers that you're getting, and we all know that, you know, you can't just plop a stoplight at the end of Pleasant, and you can't plop one on the end of South. With the data that you're collecting, does that almost like help Berlin to say that we, you know, hello DOT, we really need to do something because we're getting X amount of cars through town?
The conversation I have with Mass DOT is that the last time they came out to do their studies, a little over a year ago, we still don't meet the threshold for the number of cars. I can't see that happening anytime soon. They told me they'd be out in March doing another traffic count, I've yet to see them show up.
The hack for ways?
Yes.
Not that I'd say it in a public meeting that's being recorded, but, you know, mark your road as closed, and have your neighbors then approve that, saying, yes, it's still closed, so that Waze thinks the road is closed and routes people other directions. I also read at one point, you could took, if you took like 100 cell phones that had data plans and turned ways on all of them, and put them in a wagon and dragged them up the street at two miles an hour, that Waze would report that it's two miles an hour is the traffic on that road, and route people otherwise. Other fun updates going on?
Just the radio system, we're, just went out to rebid on the antenna system, and hopefully in the next week or two, we can wrap that up. The first set of bids came in quite far apart, so we're hoping the next set comes in pretty close together.
Could you give a little explanation, because I know someone's going to raise his hand in the audience to say what's, you know, what's the, what's going on with the radios and why the need for bids?
So, well, we need bids because of the price of the antenna systems are above the threshold. Our biggest issue is we can't hear dispatch, a lot of times dispatch can't hear us. We're using our phones, our apps to see locations of where we're actually going, and also what the call is, which, you know, for me, it's a little bit more difficult, being a Gen Xer, the millennials and Gen Zers are pretty savvy with that stuff. Half the time, I go out in the office, I don't have my phone on me. But our issue is our antennas are old. They're, the fiberglass around the antennas is degrading, and ever since they turned on 5G, we've seen even less reception, a lot of static. So we're hoping that with the new antenna system, we will cure some of that, but our repeaters are also the vintage of about 25 to 30 years old total lifespan, where the total lifespan of a repeater now is 10 to 12 years. And also comes with that was filters, our filters are obviously outdated as well. We're still running on copper, which is not maintained by Verizon anymore. So, you know, that's another issue itself, whether we go microwave or fiber optic is still to be determined, but it's definitely an issue that we've seen, of course, over the last year, and it's progressively getting worse.
And the town has some money, so what's, do you have a ballpark for the costs, and then I think we have some source of funds for at least some of it?
Yeah, so the antenna system alone is going to be, you know, probably 30,000 to 35,000, plus there may be some engineering fees to go with it, so we're going to hit close to 40,000 for the antennas. You know, and depending on which avenue we go, from what I've seen, the quotes, the most expensive part is the filters, not the repeaters themselves. You know, originally, when Chief Clark and I looked at the system, it was approximately 480,000, but we do have 340,000 in account that was donated by what we know as the Rockwell Apartments, by the original builder, which is a big chunk of change. Neighboring town of Boylston just allocated 2 million to put up the same system, or similar system that we're looking at 480,000 for. So, you know, it's, sky's the limit, I mean, you can get the cream of the crop, and like Chief Clark and I talk, you can get the Denali package or get the XL package, and we're going closer to the XL package for safe, efficient, effective radio system.
All right, sorry, go ahead.
So Chief, where, this includes, the antenna system includes new repeaters, and where will, where will that repeater antenna system be erected? Here?
Well, we have two right now. We have both cell sites are repeater locations. Coburn Road and Taylor Road are both, both sites.
So it will include both replacing the repeater and the antenna?
Repeater, filters, and antennas, but we're shooting to go for the antennas first. There's a small slim chance that our regional dispatch center will get a grant to replace all radio systems next year. So if they get the grant next year, it means the work gets done the year after. So if we can reassure that our radio system can have a very large Band-Aid put on it with new antennas, the new radio system will then work with the new repeater system. So my hope is to not put the burden on the taxpayers to buy a new radio system and let the regional center, while we signed up for it five and a half or six years ago, pay for it like we anticipated that we're going to. So that's our biggest hope.
Okay, good. It would be good if the dispatchers didn't mumble as much at that dispatch center. I've never heard dispatchers that are so soft spoken in my 50 years of doing radio work.
Yeah, we do put in tickets for those all the time, and request they do speak up a little bit for us.
Thank you.
Other questions about radios? Go ahead, go ahead.
I know at some point, there was talk about trying to relocate or put in another antenna, maybe higher up, is that still something?
I mean, it's definitely not out of the picture. We have looked at the south side of town, which is our weakest link. You know, if we could run a power line out in the middle of Mount Piscata and put a tower up, you know, even the 30-foot power, 30-foot tower, we'd have incredible coverage in town.
Well, there is a walk for, for Mount Piscata on Sunday, just saying if you want to bring a, bring a wire with you.
We'll get a bunch of extension cords, and we'll really plug them in. So I have, through my conversations with the Stevens Family Foundation, they are building a new museum, and I've asked if it would be possible for us to put antennas on the new museum, which would save us six figures. I'll be erecting a new antenna system, which will cover the south side of town, and then we could actually link it to either Coburn Road through microwave or Taylor Road. So there is, there's a potential for a third site at minimal cost to us, basically, you know, when I say minimal cost, to me, it's still a lot of money, but it's a possibility.
So even though there's been issues with antennas and radios, there's no impact to like safety, you know, in town, we're all safe and taken care of, and you can get to where we need to get to?
Yeah, I mean, fortunately, we all have cell phones, and so when the radios do go down, we do use cell phones a lot, so we never don't respond because we can't hear a call, we will call them and ask them over the telephone when it was, so. But, you know, my fear is somebody being out there and not being able to radio in, that they need help and not be allowed their cell phone.
Anything else for the police chief while we have him here?
Fair game.
I was, I worried for a moment there, but go ahead.
Any update on the engineering issues at the, what, 495 southbound under 290, there was cemetery remains found?
I haven't heard a word.
Nothing?
I haven't heard a word, you know, I think the MBTA is scoffing up all the attention right now, so. Haven't heard a word about 290 and 495, I thought that the project would have been done before November. But they also told me that 27 years ago when I started.
Just wish November.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Well, great, well, thank you very much for coming up.
Thank you.
There's some really cool things, interesting things happening over in the police department, and I think that might bring us to Fire Chief Clark.
Do you like my shirt? It's a Sterling.
Sterling.
Yeah.
Destroyed with ah, she won't pay. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to kind of bring everyone up to speed of where we are with our ALS study. We completed a study with MRI. They were favorable to move the current system from the basic life support, which we run very efficiently Firebase, over to ALS.
You might want to tell people what ALS is.
Advanced Life Support is paramedic, okay? I was luckily blessed enough to work in an agency where we started that in 2006. I saw the benefits of a system that we, on the street, weekly, that made a difference with the paramedics rather than the basic ENT. Right now, we intercept with either Bolton on the north side or Patriot on the south side for ALS intercepts, advanced life support. So they send them, they triage it at the dispatch, and if it calls for something where it looks like it might need paramedics, they automatically send them on when the call is first initiated. We meet them there or where they're, usually they're, one of the things that we've really worked hard on, and that you have invested money in, is the per diem system. And we cut the contact time down to four to six minutes on the first ambulance call, and it was up around nine plus prior to the, having the people in the building around the clock. So that's been a really good thing. So we're in there early with the BLS, and then ALS is following up that with their high level of care. So that system is working really good. We're kind of challenged right now, a lot of our people got picked from, got kind of plucked out of our system to go to career jobs at different places, Devon's, Air, and things like that, so we had some good people, and they got plucked out, but they're starting to finish their training there, and they're coming back and still working, a shift or two a week for us. So we're getting really good, well-trained people that see a lot of like operational experience at their current jobs, and they bring a lot to the table when they come back, yeah. Some of the things about the ALS is, the timing is really good for it, we had a mandatory retirement, which is 65 in the fire department in the Blue Team work group, and so we set it up so that we could have an interim position, and it would be up to the TA and the new Fire Chief when he comes in, when he gets here at the end of December or January, to make the decision whether they want to make that transition from the BLS over to the ALS in Berlin. There's money set aside from one of the mitigation funds to pay for the equipment, which would be around, it's just under or just over $100,000, just for the equipment, but that money's sitting there for that. The training time to get someone up to speed to be a medic is just under two years, so it's not something that, even if we elected TA to say, give it the green light, it happens tomorrow. So there's a lot of planning, and the hard work starts once you say go. So it's like, the licensing is challenging with OMS to make sure you have all your ducks in row to get that done, and get, the equipment's the last thing you do because of the warranties on, and bring that in late, just before you go online, so you increase that time that's got the warranty. And it's a great, great program. I saw things happen that, just like, I still look at it, and some of the ones I've done years ago, when we talked about your lesson, smile, so that we're successful, and so it's a real, it's, you can't say it's a cost savings measure, it's a life-saving measure, and they bring that high skill to the street in the first call, and the number of calls will increase when the neighboring communities see ALS rigged back there, that will increase the amount of calls and experiences that people will gain, and also will increase the intake from the EMS funds that the system will see, because you can charge more for the advanced life support than they can for the basic life support. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Any questions?
Go ahead, Barry.
I know, shocking. How many medics are you thinking that you'll need to cover?
Well, our system will be for 24 hours, they give you three years to get to 24/7/365. For the first year, you get 12 hours, and there's a person on staff who has expressed interest in it, and with the open position, which is interim for a short time until a decision is made, you could do that as a hire, as a medic, and we'll have what they call a PB waiver, and it's one paramedic and one basic. Where in the agency I came from, we were in that Boston belt, and they didn't want to water it down for the city by going, what they didn't give out, those PB waivers, they had two PBs. So it took us a little bit longer to get going, because we have to have a minimum of two a shift to keep it up and running. So it's like, but this is a PB waiver, there'll be one medic and one basic, you know, if something's bad, you grab another medic someplace and, or get other options, you can still intercept with the, with the ALS trucks if needed, if something was really, really bad and required more than one medic. That's a very common practice in Firebase ALS, and right now, we work really, really good with Bolton is right there, and also with Patriot coming out of Hudson. So, and we got some other backup ones that we can, that we can go to in a pinch.
So you mentioned $100,000 for equipment, is- Is that just outfitting what we have or are you looking at like our own interceptor car to be fully loaded and go?
Nothing to do with an interceptor car. We're gonna, well, that vision could change if there's decisions are made after I go. But it's like, I look at it like as it's an ambulance, it's the Berlin ambulance will be outfitted at the ALS level. And my recommendation, if I was going to stay, the next time they, they develop an engine, is you develop an ALS compartment in the cab where it's, it keeps everything nice and warm in the cold weather. So we're still a small organization here and the people have to do EMS and the fireside. And so if they're out on the, on the fireside, they have that equipment with them so they can go to a scene. All they need is someone's ambulance to come help with a transport. So they can go and initiate care, right, they can go from a chimney fire on Linden Street to an EMS call on South Street and go to work. It's a, call it ALS, it's EFR they refer to it, or OMS. And my other agency, we did that because we were at the point, the beginning where we either went on both apparatus, now they're both man there. So it's like, makes it a little bit easier, operationally more functional.
Do you find that there's interest within the current staff to move?
And then Chief, one of the things that make it expensive from an annual operating standpoint is the state law that requires us to do this 24/7, even though our own call patterns show that we wouldn't need it 24/7. And so potentially, if, you know, the ability to change some state laws, because I don't think we're the only town where 24/7 is not sort of beneficial necessarily.
And that's why when you start, they do 12 hours, they go up 12 and then they go that 18 in the 60 mark. So you won't have to worry about that for a couple of years after you start it, but nope, very, something that you gotta really look at.
And although that, not although, the, the town ended up spending a lot more on fire over the years. We went from an on-call department to a per diem department. And as you point out, the result of that was our average response time was cut by several minutes where, you know, in crisis and emergency, every second sort of counts. You're saying that in some respects, if we did a similar investment towards ALS, we were potentially the life sustaining care, we potentially could cut some of those minutes down as well.
Same as the one just now. And in Berlin, in Victoria's here, we could get the exact numbers, but I believe it's around a third of the population is over that 65 mark. So it's like, and so that gets that ALS top shelf care. When something happens with one of those people, that top shelf care is there in that really smallest timeframe that you can have to help them, which is important.
And I am for, for, so a couple of things. I believe at some point, even later this fall, we'll probably do a, a meeting that's just on ALS that goes into both the presentation of the study and also the sort of numbers that go into it. I think this is as much to whet that appetite and get people to start thinking about what some of those questions are, where they think that sort of cost benefit might be. It is also a chance, and he's alerted to it a couple of times, I don't think I'm spilling any beans by saying that Chief Clark has also announced that he's retiring at the end of this year. We have already started a contract with MRI Resources to help us start hiring, start the hiring process for the next Fire Chief with the hopes to have that process sort of dove nicely so we don't have a, a large gap between Chief Clark's last day and the starting day of whoever might be the, the next candidate. I'm kind of hoping since our, our town administrator search, we ended up with actually 16 candidates and a town that has a good reputation of a place to, to work, that we, we see the same when it comes to a Fire Chief placement, that we get a lot of good quality candidates.
I think in January, 51 years in the streets, so time to go on.
Questions for Chief Clark while we still have him here? Well, thank you very much, Chief Clark, for coming forward.
Oh, we have an open house, first one they had in a long time, right Frank? October 16th, it's a Sunday from 11 to 3:00. Everyone's welcome to come in and visit, meet your staff, see some of the live demonstrations they're gonna have and it'll be a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. We'll make sure we, we post that a couple of places as well. Do you want to, Victoria has a question.
We haven't heard them.
Yep. It's Victoria. We haven't had, we haven't tested the speaker volume for people on the, in the, in the audience, but go ahead, Victoria, ask a question or make your comment.
I just wanted to add something to the podcast. I just wanted to let everybody know that this conference is working, that we had the Mary on today, Friday, and we started here. Is this helpful to you?
The kickoff meeting is Thursday, October 6th at 6:30 down at the home base, right off of River Road. It's confidential. It's a, it's a private meeting where families and parents, children with something of substance abuse disorder can go and get support. Myself, non-public safety, are directly involved with it. We just wanted to get that resource to everybody.
And, and for everyone that couldn't hear that as well, and this is the joy of hybrid meetings, we get to test all these things out. There is a forum for the C's.
Narcanics Anonymous.
Yeah, Narcotics Anonymous event coming up and.
It's on Facebook.
And we'll continue to publicize it and we'll get it out. And I think the recording might have picked it up a little bit better than, than it was heard, heard in the room. Sorry about that, Victoria. And so let's, the, the last and, and Speaker of the Evening, although we have a lot of fun things, is our new Town Administrator, Kristin Rubin. She is on her.
Almost full week.
Almost full week. By tomorrow, it'll be a full week that she has been here in town. And so I'll leave it up to you to just tell you a little bit more of your background. You came here and we'll take it from there.
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Kristin Rubin. I'm very excited to be here in Berlin. I have about 15 years in local government. It's what I've done ever since I got my MPA. And I've had a varied career, mostly in housing, community development, economic development, a lot with grants. Worked for a large county in California, the city of Worcester. And then for the last eight years, I've been with the town of Lester. I served first as the Assistant to the Town Administrator and then moved up to the Assistant Town Administrator. And this past spring, I realized it's about time to take that next step in my career. And I started looking around because I went from, you know, large to medium to small and I really enjoy a rural, smaller setting. You really can get your hands involved in a lot of different things and you can really make a difference and see something tangible when you're working in a small community. And that's something that I really enjoy. I am actually a native of Lester, moved away, came back. So Lester is larger than Berlin, but it's similar in that it is a rural community. It's a bedroom community for Worcester essentially, faces some similar struggles when it comes to water, sewer, business development, that push and pull between keeping things rural, but also increasing your tax base so that you have the services that you need in town. And I just felt that of all the places that I had been looking at, and there are a lot out there right now, Berlin was really the best fit for me. So I put in my application, was really excited to come in and it seemed like it was a great fit on both sides. So I'm very happy to be here. I live in Lemonster with my husband, who's here in the audience. He wanted to come and say hi. So I am recently married. I have a stepson who is nine and three dogs, which is very important. I love dogs. So feel free to stop by, show me a picture of your dog, tell me about your dog. It's a great way to break the ice. I am here for anything that the residents want to discuss. I am generally have my door open if I'm not in a meeting or working on an urgent deadline. Feel free to stop by the town hall. I'm probably gonna camp out here a fair amount as I have been this week. It is day five, as Scott mentioned, and I am learning a tremendous amount. I have my handy notebook here where I'm just figuring out the needs of everyone from boards and committees to department heads and just trying to also pick up on what the urgent projects are and how we can help move some of those things forward as quickly as we can. So I, that's I think all for me, but I'm happy to take any questions that anybody may have or talk a little bit more about anything specific. I bet this gentleman before over here in the front row, so I believe he has a question.
I do.
Go ahead.
Transition of this nature is always gonna be somewhat problematic.
Sure.
And try and keep the question somewhat simplified, but prior to your taking this position, obviously there's been business as usual in town, some of it unusual. There are things that are left undone from one town administrator to the next and that involves also the board select, the select board. And I'm just wondering between the select board and yourself, what you can tell the town about how those, and I'll, I'll use an unfair word, dangling situations. How are they gonna be identified? How are they gonna be prioritized? And what's the approach to dealing with them?
That's a great question. I've already started down that path. Margaret, the former town administrator, was kind enough to meet with me for four hours and gave me a project list of priority projects prioritized, which was extremely helpful and generous of her. As I've met with the department heads and the boards and also the select board, I've discussed those projects with them and we've started to kind of cull them into a list of what needs to be done urgently. Now, what may be urgent for one party is not necessarily the same for another and everybody's projects are important. I won't be able to do them all at the same time. I mean, I can work about 22 hours a day, but I need about two hours of sleep. So I, and leave a little bit and I gotta say hi to the dogs. So, you know, it's, it's going to be a process, but working with the board, I'm calling together everything that I'm gleaning from all of the meetings that I'm having. I've had about three to four meetings a day and we're gonna sit down and work together on making sure things get done. Right now, I'm kind of doing the most urgent things, what I call a little bit of like low-hanging fruit urgent items, just some of the smaller things that I can get out of the way in between my meetings. And next week, I will be done most of the larger meetings and able to start diving into some of the larger projects.
And even as a select board here, we all met with her individually, not as a group. And so I'm dying at some point to get her feedback of like where the three of us actually agreed on where the priorities are and where we disagreed on where some of the priorities are.
I only listed two because I was told to behave. So I only went in with two.
And is, is it too much to ask of the board and Kristin of the projects that are identified as priority to let the parties involved know that they are on the radar rather than, we have, we don't have a great communication system in this community for getting news out to the people. We're kind of in a black hole. So I'm wondering, is it, is it possible that the town offices can reach out to whoever may be involved in a priority situation that, hey, you know, we're kicking it around, we're doing whatever we're doing. I'm not looking for answers, but just to let people know that they are on the radar. Because living in the dark is not a fun place.
So if I may, I have two answers to that for you. One, I'm a bit of an email junkie. I'm on my email constantly. And for everybody out there, my email is the same as it was for the previous town administrator. It's townadmin@townofberlin.com. Obviously juggling many things, but if you don't hear from me, please email me, contact me. I'm also very responsive on email. If I'm not able to do something you're asking me to do, I will at least get back to you and say, this is on my radar, I'm working on it, this is when I think I can get it done. And I try to be really open with people about that. Also in terms of communication with the public, one of the first observations I've made, and I've kind of started to talk a little bit about this, is our website and our communications need to be a little bit better. So I'm going to be having those discussions with the board going forward about how we can improve that process, getting that information out, keeping it up to date and coordinating with the other departments and the boards to make sure not just the homepage is up to date, but those other webpages get up to date as well.
I also think, and although we've not been great, we have used the, a lot of pegs work though, used the Clinton item to get things out and the, in the last two months, they have.
Slowed down a little bit.
They've slowed down. I was trying to find nice ways of saying it.
Slowed down.
But they've gone from a 16-page document to an eight-page, there, where three of them are gone, their, their editorial pages are gone and their reporter is gone. And so it's getting much harder, even when we write the articles ourselves or, I say, we, when Peg writes the articles for the select board, that it's even getting those and it's getting more difficult. I was at least happy to see that Horseshoe Pond Purchase at least made their latest issue, but, but a lot of other things that have been written have not including, you know, announcements for this meeting, so, or this coffee talk.
Yeah. I mean, and we need to be creative as well because we know that everybody is not on social media, you know? So you just can't rely on, hey, here's the webpage, go look. So, you know, I, I don't know what we can do in, as Scott said, the item, I send out articles on a weekly basis on Monday night to hit the deadline. And I run down the store on a Friday and I buy the item and I'm like, it's not there for that. So suggestions, thoughts on how to get information out so that everyone in town can see it, hear it. I mean, that's the whole purpose of us sending the information to the item so they can see the land grant, you know, for Carolyn and, and conservation and all the great work that they did for Mount Pisgah. And, you know, Fred and his grant that he got to do some work and, and you guys for, you know, the grant for the mattresses, but it's just a way of pushing the information out there. So, you know, unless you come in, unless you watch, you're not gonna hear everything. So that's probably one of our big items is to try and disseminate info so it goes around the town.
Well, there is a very large message board that said, come meet our new town administrator. I nearly drove off the road when I saw it the other day. I was waiting for like my photo to show up next. I'm very glad it didn't.
Mary took care of that with the next announcement. Your face went up.
Oh, my face went up? Okay. That's why the audience is small. No, I'm just kidding. So we, the other thing I can do, and I'm kind of thinking off the cuff here, is I plan to start a written town administrator report that I want to include for every board meeting and perhaps that's something we can blast out or, and it could even be printed perhaps. Maybe it could be at the general store. You know, something we can get that information out. Yes.
What if you did an email list and email push per town wide?
Yeah. There could be just an email list that it goes out to, that people can subscribe and unsubscribe to.
Because not everybody's interested, but I think those that are would probably sign up for something like that. And to get it right in your email box would be very helpful.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
And then if you're already going through the trouble of writing up things, then by all means, use all of your methods to get them out. And you also have the poster post.
Yeah.
That's a third of the population?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions for the town administrator? Are there, are there things you want to get on her radar? As far as I do find, we did our first agenda setting this morning and it's not just like this is the item on the agenda, but okay, this is why it's on the agenda, this is how it got to the point where it's on the agenda and trying to get, get at least a little bit of background on them and we'll probably do a, a little bit more. And so our, our five-minute meeting that I was doing with our fill-in and even with Margaret before became significantly longer today. And good, it was productive.
Yes. Soaking it all in, learning as much as I can.
So I imagine that there'll be a lot of those and I, I imagine you're continuing to try to get to different committees and, and groups over the next several months as well.
Absolutely. I was at the Personnel Committee last night and I, I have, I can't even tell you, my calendar's filling up quickly. If there's anything anyone wants me to attend, don't hesitate to reach out. Townadmin, townofberlin.com. Stop by, call me. Anyway, tell Peg. I guess she gets information out very well, so let, let her know. And I'm, I'm happy to make, you know, stop by at a meeting and meet people and chat about anything that you'd be interested in.
I was wondering if I could put you on the spot, Carolyn, to come up and, and talk about.
He knew that was gonna be.
Yep. I'm sorry.
First, let me ask my question.
Sure. Ask your question first, then you can go forward.
I'm gonna put my CPA hat on for a minute. We have an application that is somewhat timely and we're wondering if there's been any talk about a fall town meeting? I know it's only been five days, but it's already been five days.
No pressure.
Right. No pressure. So just curious.
At this point, the select board has not been planning a fall town meeting. There's not been agenda items that have come forward that, that make us think we need one at this point.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that we couldn't have one even for a single issue or a couple of issues if they came forward, but at this point, there's not one currently planned for the fall.
Okay. Easier for us to plan knowing. I don't know that it. Easier for us to plan knowing, I don't know that it, that the community garden fence is quite important in a town meeting for just that one.
But it's, but it is worth sometimes letting us know.
Yes, we do have...
Because what it does do is allows us to, just, there could be a bunch of small issues that together make something worthy of it. And so knowing that there is issues, that's true for other sort of commissions and groups in town, if there is, if they think there is a, something that would benefit from a fall town meeting, to let us know. Because we could even put one together because that means that's 10 less things will be on the May town meeting. And I think Chris Keef would like to, to say something as well, our other select board member who is, I'm timing this remotely, and I'll see if I can do this again and turn up the volume on my laptop. Oh. Go ahead, Chris.
I'm getting feedback on my end, Scott, but I just wanted to let Caroline know that we, there are, there is a possibility, we're keeping some of the liaison work that I have been doing, there is a possibility of a need for a fall town meeting, but we don't have a clue yet.
Okay, so there's a, yes. So yeah, if we hear enough small things, we could even put something together too. But again, we haven't scheduled anything at this point or even contemplated a date at this point. And then with your conservation hat, you...
Yes, I'll put my conservation hat on.
Go ahead, sorry, come forward so it's not just some nebulous voice in the audience.
I'm not nebulous. You're kind of a spotlight, I know. So I, where do, where do you want me to start?
I was thinking both the kickoff meeting and the open house or whatever it's called.
The walk.
The walk, yep.
Okay.
But you could say more to any parts to go with it.
So just for those who haven't been keeping up on it, at the last, at the annual town meeting, there was the second of two warrant items asking for CPA funds for land purchase at the corner of Lyman and Linden Street. We are, and we also talked about that we were going to apply for grants to try and bring some of that money back into town. There were three grants that we were able to apply for. We applied for the land grant, did not get that, but we did apply for the MVP grant, which is the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, which is a relatively new program in the state. But it also paid the biggest reimbursement back and we did receive that. And of the $1.1 million purchase price, we're getting $874,286. Don't quote me on the last three. We're getting a significant amount of that money back and that money will go back into CPA funds. Any projects, this is just for future knowledge, any projects by anybody that uses CPA funds that get reimbursement funds, the money goes back to CPA. So, but that rebuilds the coffers and actually CPA made a profit of $50,000. So we, so we have a kickoff meeting on October 4th. There are still some things that we need to do to satisfy the grant. One of them is this walk that is scheduled on Sunday. So anybody who wants to go out and check out the trails, there's going to be a scavenger hunt, there's going to be some, you know, just, it's from 2:00 to 4:00 on Sunday, meet at Linden Street, the Linden Street parking area. And did, I think it's supposed to be, you're actually a nice date too, so.
Can you bring up the October 4th kickoff?
Right, so the, so on October 4th, there is a kickoff meeting for the, for the...
The paperwork involved to move it from SPT to the town, to the town.
So the representative from the state, representative from the town, conservation, and Sedbury Valley trustees will all be at this meeting so that we're all clear as to what we have to finish doing to satisfy the requirements of the grant. And the other good news is Sedbury Valley trustees is actually the owner of the property. So that step has now happened. So we're just, we need to finish, the town now needs to buy it from SPT. So inching closer, but we're there.
Great. Any other questions on that? Good, thank, thank you very much. We've gone through some of our speakers, are there, this is sort of also a coffee talk with select board, are there other sort of just general town questions, interest things for the select board here? Chris is also watching, although she's not physically present, could also participate and actually has been. And if on your online, you can raise your hands.
Wow, nothing.
I know.
Nothing.
You've got all kinds of great stuff tonight. Well, then, great. I thank everyone for coming and attending. It was informative, we will try this again in a few months with, I'm sure, other fun things on the agenda.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yep, sorry, sorry, we have a wait.
We need an appointment of Mr. Wayne.
We already did, you missed it, it was at 6:15.
We've already appointed Wayne to the CPA committee, so yes. So congratulations, Wayne, you're on it whether you want to or not now at this point.
Wow.
Thank you, everyone. Do we need a formal motion to adjourn select board?
Even though it really wasn't the meeting.
Yeah, we opened it up. So...
I would make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
And then since we're hybrid, we still do all, we do it individual votes, so Hawkins Eye.
Stone Eye.
Thank you very much.
Night.
Night.